Everyone, once again for their hard work. We presented at the council meeting on Monday night. It was short of short notice. We didn't know about it until Friday night. But I wanted to thank Mark for getting me prepared enough to speed and teaming with me to present on behalf of the building committee. Subsequent to that, we were asked to submit the presentation that we made to the council, to the messenger. So there will be an article in the messenger on Friday, which is basically a who, what, when, where, why, as it relates to the building committee project. What else did I want to report on? I guess that is it. And again, just wanted to welcome our special members from the library building committee. We have talked about this for quite some time, so we're happy to have you here. And with that, we'll just old business and look for most Michelle. Yeah.
Yes, I have a point of procedure, Mr. Chairman. I would like to have your ruling on, I have two questions that I appreciate being able to ask. Under new business, item four, see project update and site selection criteria. That I would like to ask when Tai Su Kim and associates do its presentation as opposed to comments under the committee, because I think it would be more appropriate as he hits those areas to ask my two questions, if I may.
Yes, that is perfectly fine. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes from February 10?
So moved.
Michelle, is there a second? Is that Mark? Okay, Bob, Bob Burman, excuse me, any discussion on the minutes?
Great.
Yes, Mark.
Page two. Number, paragraph four, architect report, first paragraph. Last sentence, there's the word actors. Which I believe should be.
Factors.
Factors. Okay, okay, thank you. And then the following paragraph. Last sentence, just a typo is the word form instead of from. Did you find that Nancy?
Yep.
Those are my comments.
Okay, any other comments or questions with respect to the minutes? All in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Say a nine.
Aye.
Aye.
And the opposed or abstentions, hearing none, the motion passes. Great. New business, item number one, introduction of our library board trustees. I'm going to turn it over to committee member Ava Biffler. I saw her. Tires, everybody here. Okay, Ava, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm just gonna do a very brief introduction of each of our members. Leah isn't here yet, but I'll just include her. I'm actually the chairperson of the library board. And I have more than 50 years of experience working in various types of libraries. That's probably my only real credential there. I would like to take just a few seconds and explain at least my offer to serve on the library building committee. My firsthand knowledge of Prosser clearly indicates that it does not simply need updating and more room. Given the plant, the physical plant's dire state of disrepair, I'm deeply concerned that it could be forced to close before we can create a new facility, leaving only McMahon to attempt to serve the needs of our entire town. And I, like the rest of the board, feel very strongly that every Bloomfield resident deserves a high quality facility to meet their diverse and ever-changing needs. And with that, I would like to introduce the other members. Leah is not here yet. Okay. Ms. Leah Farrell is the vice chairperson of the library board. She is a fully qualified, skilled, experienced professional librarian. Leah has also taken on the leadership of the programming and space planning subcommittee. Dr. Maxine Ursery is a highly qualified, skilled, experienced educator and educational leader. Maxine also has taken on the leadership of the external survey and outreach subcommittee. Beverly Merritt, who is with us tonight, has long been an active, committed advocate for the library. She is the longest-serving trustee on the board with decades of leadership and service. Anne Levitt, whose name I did see go by, good, Anne is here. Anne has served Bloomfield in various capacities for more than five decades. She brings deep knowledge of the town and its workings, as well as expertise in matters related to real estate and buildings to the board. And unfortunately, our other member is not yet here tonight, but I will just briefly say that Todd Cooper is our newest trustee. He joined the board last fall. Todd brings long experience with volunteer work in Bloomfield and statewide organizations and a real desire to serve the town. So thank you for that opportunity to introduce the board, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. I think what I'll do is a little bit outside of the agenda, but I would like to invite our library board members to share a moment or two about your vision for this project. And I'll start, I'm just looking at the top of my screen, and I guess I'll start with Bev Merritt. And Bev, thank you so much for being here, if you're interested in commenting on that.
I certainly wasn't prepared to say anything very special about the, at this meeting, I felt I was just a guest, and I'm happy to listen to what's happening. It's been a very long haul for me trying to get this library through. I wouldn't want to even go through how many years we've been trying to do this and how many failures we've had. So my, my vision is basically just to accomplish this. The town really needs a new library desperately. So I'm enjoying, I'm going to enjoy listening to what you people have in mind. I trust you all will do a very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ava?
Well, you, you've all heard me talk plenty of times, but I, I want a functional library. I want a library that is every bit as flexible and adaptable and inclusive so that every single resident of this town has a library that they've waited a long time for and really deserve.
Thank you. Maxine?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I think, when I think of the library, I really think of a place that we can call a community center for us, a place that's utilized. Can you see? Hello?
Yes.
Okay, so I just, I really want a library that's like the hub of our town that we can utilize, that the young folks can utilize, that it's just a place where we can go and find social events, books, meeting spaces and things of that nature. So I really want it to be the hub of what brings us together as a community.
Thank you. Leah?
As if you guys want to hear me talk about this more, but I'm not as eloquent as our other board members, but I want us to have the library or libraries that this town deserves and has thoroughly deserved for a very long time. A place where everyone can meet and be treated equally, no matter what they look like, what they smell like, you know, how much money they make, and all have access to the same opportunities because of it. And I want people to look at the library and be like, yeah, that's my library and be really proud of it and proud of our town.
Right.
Thank you. And you're on the call. I'm not sure if you want to share.
You can unmute yourself, Anne, if you'd like to speak.
Oh.
There you go.
There I am. Yeah, I, I guess my feelings are pretty much those that have already been expressed. I've lived in town for a long, long time and my children and grandchildren, and now my great grandchildren are utilizing the library and I just see it as sort of a, the center of the town in that it would bring people from all walks of life and different areas than the community and be a central point for people to meet, get educated, utilize all of the services that the library has to offer. It's a very special place, and I think it should kind of be almost the center of the town.
Thank you so much. And I, I think it's important to hear from our library board members. We have a number of the board members who are playing active leadership roles in Prosser. You'll hear from them tonight, but again, wanted to highlight the contributions that the folks in the library board of trustees are making on this project. So thank you all once again, and we're going to roll into our committee reports, and you're going to hear from another library board member, who is the chair of our external outreach and survey subcommittee, Maxine.
Hi, everyone. Just a quick update. So we've put a lot of time and effort into the creation and the development of the public survey, and we're so ecstatic and excited to report on the number of responses we had. As of Saturday, we had 1,532 responses. I checked earlier today and we have 90 more since then. So that's great. We have far exceeded our hopes of 1,000. So we're, we're, we're in a good space. Throughout the library's partnership with the Bloomfield Public Schools, we were able to get the opinions of the middle schoolers and the high schoolers. And we have about a little over 500 of the responses are from that age group, the zero to 17 age group. 65 and older, the 65 and older community accounted for about 475 responses. And the residents identified the cafe, meeting room and workspace and individual and group study spaces as the top three features that they would like to have in a new library. Our original survey launched on January 22nd, and the survey is slated to close on March 5th. Elizabeth and her team will be communicating the closing date to the community with a focus on publicizing and building energy and buzz around the closing of the survey, giving everyone that last ditch ever to participate in the survey. The social media, there will be social media posts highlighting the survey responses and again encouraging residents to participate before the closing date. Shortly after that closing of the survey, the consultants, Alan and Leslie Berger of Library Development Solutions will share an analysis of the findings with us. We, at the outreach committee, we will be hosting PSAs and informational community sessions to share the plans for the new library and provide opportunities for the community to dialogue with us, to give us feedback and to give us their input on the project. We will be sharing the survey results through multiple platforms, the messenger, flyers from both physical locations, social media, phone campaign, a canvassing campaign. So we're really trying to reach all the residents of our community. We discussed having a youth subcommittee to work in conjunction with the library building committee to generate interest in the library in that age, in the younger age group and encourage young people to vote. We will, as I mentioned, we will be conducting phone phone campaigns and canvassing in certain areas of town to encourage residents who have not participated in the survey and who historically do not utilize the library to participate and give their voice in the project. That's it for me.
Any questions, comments for Maxine? Anne? Okay, great. I'm going to move on to the program and space planning subcommittee. Shared by Leah.
Not much to report right now. We are waiting on, we're waiting on the survey report and we're also, Leslie is working hard right now on the space plan for a smaller library, wherever that does end up being. And we'll be kind of tweaking that over the next week or so, and then I'll have probably more to report. There's probably no questions for that.
Any questions for Leah and the program and space planning subcommittee? Wow, okay, great. And I'm going to turn it over to our vice chair, Mark, who will update us on the construction.
Hey, construction manager subcommittee, we met February 16th. We finalized our RFQ for the cost estimator. Nancy has issued the RFQ and we're expecting three quotes next week, which the subcommittee will review. And our goal is to bring it to the full committee and make a recommendation at our next meeting to engage one of those firms. And as of following this meeting, we'll, we'll begin the process of the RFP for the CM. And the next significant date there really for the committee is we expect that we should be conducting interviews in approximately mid-May for our finalists, CM finalists. And that's all I have to report. Questions on that?
Mark, are the recipients of the RFQ, are they local?
I believe two out of three, I think one of our, our people we asked was out of Massachusetts, who had done some work on the community center for us.
Great. Okay. All right, Elizabeth, the directors report?
Yes, I just had two things. One was a style thing, and I wanted to say thank you so much, Mark, on Monday night for so eloquently stating to the council that we are looking at the entire system of Bloomfield Public Library, which is three locations, Prosser Library, McMahon Wittenberry Library and BPL Online. I also wanted to let the committee know that we have been extremely busy the entire time of the pandemic. And I'm bringing this up just as I know that people are going to be talking more and more about the library. So I wanted to just share some, some milestones that we just reached. That since the pandemic started, we have provided more than 80,000 materials on over 10,000 separate occasions curbside. BPL Online has experienced over 100,000 interactions with our public, and we have had more than 500 virtual programs attended by close to 10,000 people. So we continue to be busy. We continue to serve our public, and we continue to reach new people during this time. We are continuing to give new library cards out to our community. And I am 1,000% certain that when we have this new building, it will be filled with people. We will be post-pandemic and we will be serving our entire public. So thank you, everybody, for the continued work. It's very valuable. And I, I know all the time that's involved, and I just want to say thank you from our staff and on behalf of the residents. It's, it's wonderful. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Elizabeth, any questions or comments for our director? Okay, hearing none, we will roll into the project update and site selection criteria discussion with our friends from Tai Su Kim Partners. Whit?
Hey, thanks, Chairman. Whit Eigelhart, TSKP Studio. Let me just share my screen. Okay. Okay, so you all are familiar with the schedule that we're working with. No big changes at this point with it. We're making progress. This dash line indicates where we currently are in the process and moving towards some of the near-term goals, identifying the site. So I think the next major piece is the committee arriving at a selection of the preferred site, which we have targeted for the March 10th meeting. We've been putting together the draft report to incorporate the findings as they develop. And I'll run you through those briefly. And obviously, some of the other things coming up down the line will be, once we have a site selected, we'll be able to go forward with developing that concepts or concepts for that site. And then also getting materials done that the cost estimator can work with at that point.
Whit, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yes, it is better.
I'll hold this up in front of my, my. So I think all of this is moving along as expected. The, this is the summary at this point of where we are with the, the three sites that had been selected so far. And I think you're, you're familiar with this. These numbers, of course, are influx. They're all subject to change. And we can talk about a little bit more in detail how they have been derived at this point. But we have site one, Prosser Library, whether it's a standalone, a new building replacing the existing structure, or whether it's a renovation of the existing structure with an addition. We have the Town Hall site, whether it's a new two-story building on the Bloomfield Avenue side of the site, or whether it's a three-story building attached to the rear corner of Town Hall. And then site three is the McMahon Wittenberry site. Again, looking at whether it's a new standalone building replacing the existing library, or whether it's a renovation of some, some size and I'm sorry, addition of some size to a renovated McMahon library. So each of these, at this point, has assumed a building size of approximately 35,000 square feet, which was derived from the program so far, with the exception of the McMahon addition, which for the purposes of this, we have shown as 12,000 square feet. I understand that may be reduced. There's, the program committee is looking at that, and obviously that would change those numbers. And so our, our estimating is, it's developed from estimating of the construction costs, all the other soft costs that go into an overall project cost, including contingencies to arrive at a total cost that incorporates construction costs, soft costs and contingencies together. So that's where we are with schedule. We did share yesterday, I believe, or the day before, the current draft of the report for the study. And again, this is a work in progress. And we're trying to, to map out the format of how this will be presented, basically identifying the background of the project, the charge to the committee. Gesundheit, yes. Recommendations, site options. This was the, the general site selection criteria that we have suggested for evaluating the value or the appropriateness of each site for the library. And then a brief outline of each of the concepts with a brief description and a site plan. I think as we've looked at this draft, our sense is it's, these images are a little too small. As we develop this further, I think we're going to revise this layout in order to increase the size of this. For people who have not been familiar with the process so far, we'll revise this, I think, so it'll be easier to, to see. Town Hall site likewise. And the McMahon site, again, the new larger library building cited there versus the existing building renovated with an addition on the front. Some of the layout options, again, are very conceptual at this point, but just to explain the current thinking of how these sites would be approached, the Prosser site with the new construction of building filling this current site with a connection across the stream to parking on the Riley Lumber site. Second version with the addition and renovations, the gray being the existing library building and the white being the new addition wrapping around two sides of it. Town Hall site, again, the, the building on Bloomfield Avenue. The three-story option adjacent to Town Hall. Here's the rear of the Town Hall building right here on the first floor. And then the McMahon site again with the, the footprint of a new building, a two-story building. Or a one-story existing building with the addition on the front. So each of these will, will lay out that current concept of each of those options at this point. Timeline, of course. Stepping back to look at the process of how we've arrived at these sites, looking at the overall number of sites that were brought in for consideration at the beginning. And then summarizing where we ended up with the three sites that remain. Space requirements, we're bringing in the programming materials from the programming committee. So these are all listed here. One other piece that I think was, one other piece that I think we'll want to incorporate in the report is some summary from the survey committee in the survey process. Some summary narrative that will explain the survey and the results. And as soon as we get that information, that will be folded into this report as well. And then the cost factors, again, that break down the overall comparative costs for libraries on the three sites, as well as the more of the breakdown of how those costs are derived. So in this case, each page is associated with one of the sites. So this is the Prosser site on one page, followed by the Town Hall site on the next page, and the Macmillan site on the last page. So that's the, the format of the report. As I said, it's a draft. All this is to be fleshed out as we get more information, as we select the preferred site, that of course will become the primary focus at the beginning of the report. And all of these other site options will be, will remain as, as a part of the process that we've gone through. Now, I, I suspect that you would like to understand a little bit more, you know, where we are in terms of these assumptions on cost. And I can briefly walk you through this. As I said, and I think as Richard has explained, previous meetings, you know, this information is a work in progress. It's developed from information that we have so far. It's been interpolated and projected forward from information from the previous studies to estimate a cost range in 2023, when actual construction would be occurring. All of these numbers need to be vetted by the committee, by other sources, and certainly by the ultimate cost estimator when that time comes. At this point, you know, we've used numbers that we feel comfortable with relative to general square foot costs for new construction and for renovation. Some of that has been in consultation with people in the construction industry currently, but that will need to be confirmed. You know, a couple of things just to highlight hazardous abatement. There's a cost identified, or at least budgeted for the Prosser Library site as well as for McMahon. And it's been indicated to us without any other information about the status of a hazardous materials report to assume generally about $14 a square foot. So based on the 22,600 square feet of Prosser Library, that's $316,000. Again, if, if there's a report that exists, that would adjust that number, and there may be estimates that could be used to modify that. As we look down at, let me also just mention, as I mentioned earlier, with the McMahon Wittenberry, this is again, the same program size for the new building here, about 35,000 square feet. For this option, of course, this is just the addition to the existing Wittenberry. For this breakdown, so far, we had the new addition of about 5,800 square feet for a total of 12,000 square feet. And as I said, I understand that there's some discussion, maybe we'll have it further about reducing that number. And obviously, we reduce that number and, and these costs will come down. Other costs, this is group B is all of the quote soft costs associated with the project. Again, we've made some assumptions and put some allowances in with our understanding at this point that are subject to change. Some mothballing of Prosser if one selects, for instance, the Town Hall site or selects Wittenberry without using the Prosser site, then some cost is allocated for buttoning up the existing building to save it. FFNE, we've just made some assumptions in terms of the furniture, fixtures and equipment. across the board for all the projects, slightly less for the addition to Wintonbury. AE fees, architects and engineers fees and whatnot are tied to the value of construction, so they adjust according to that. Design contingencies, testing fees are standard generally for construction when you get into there. Owners rep and clerk of the works, there's a budgeted amount in here of $100,000 for each of these primary projects. That's a question as to whether the town and the committee will determine that they need an owners rep. That may not be necessary, particularly if you're selecting a CM, responsible CM, that may not be a need. So that number is to be confirmed. Moving expenses, we've got an allowance for moving expenses and a note on most of these that they involve two moves, meaning you're moving out of the existing library to get out of the way into temporary space. And then you're moving at the end of construction to get back into the new library. So that needs to be accounted for. Legal fees, computer and equipments, these numbers were derived, these were actually from, I believe, the Bloomfield IT folks provided a number, and so we've plugged that in at this point. Likewise, other video and technology equipment. Swing space costs, assuming some leasing period and assuming in the leasing approximately 10,000 square feet. These are the numbers that are plugged in for those. So all of this combined, including the contingency numbers that are outlined here, and the owner's overall contingency of 10% is how this total number is arrived at. So it's a combination of the hard construction cost, the soft costs, and the owner's contingency on top. The message here is not so much to look at any one of these numbers in detail, but really, at this point, in terms of site selection, it's looking at the fact that all of them fall within a fairly modest range of about 10%. With the exception, of course, of the smaller addition to McMahon. So I think as we identified at the previous meeting, in terms of criteria for site selection, it doesn't appear that construction cost is a major factor. I think it's the other site selection criteria that really should guide this decision for the committee. And then as we move forward, these numbers for the preferred site will be fine tuned as we confirm the program, as we confirm the building size, and as we confirm all these associated costs. So with that, I will open it up to question. I understand there there were a couple already.
Hey, Whit, I know that Michelle.
Yes.
But before, Michelle, before you ask your question, I just want to ask two quick questions. With with respect to McMahon and the expansion, I thought we were looking at an 8,000 square foot space there. And I wanted to know what the differential is and the numbers between 12,000 square feet, 8,000 square feet, if you have it. And then secondly, what can you share with the group? I know you made some disclaimers about sort of the sticker shock. You know, when you look at these numbers, they are obviously much bigger than what we anticipated and what we can afford. How does that process work? And, you know, how do we go from there? Because we clearly are not in a position to sign off on numbers that at this range.
Absolutely. Right, understood. Well, first of all, just relative to the Wintonbury thing, this I could actually just change this number right now, and we can see what that does. So if we're saying you're looking at a total square footage of 8,000 square feet.
Correct.
Renovation and new, so it would be approximately 2,000 square feet of new construction. And so that changed the construction cost number down and some of the markups associated with that, which brings that down to about 6.8 million based on that. So we'd have to verify this as we get into the the detail, but essentially.
That took 2 million, 2.1 roughly?
Yeah, this was at, was it 58 before, 5200? 8.5, almost 8.6. Down to 6.8.
Okay.
So, just order of magnitude, that that would be the impact. And what was your your second question was, oh, in terms of of just the overall sticker shock? Yeah, I mean, I think these are big numbers. The, of course, you need to understand there is some significant contingencies in these numbers to arrive at this project cost. And, you know, right now, there's about 20. Yeah, almost 30% of contingency spread in different categories in the project, which is necessary at this point in a design where there there's so much that is not known yet about the project. So I think, you know, we need to maintain those contingencies, but we need to also look at where we can scale things back. And as we confirm whether or not some of these costs are even necessary or can be reduced, that will have an impact on the overall cost. If we look at the square footage, obviously, that has an impact. We need to balance that against those program needs and make a decision on that. You know, I think certainly one of the questions that I'm sure the programming committee, and I think they're working on it right now with Leslie, is the program information so far is for the the large central library. And depending on what ends up in the secondary library, does that have an impact on that program size for the main building? Are there some functions in the main program that could be shifted to the other branch and reduce the program of the main building? That's a question to be answered.
Thank you. Michelle?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Whit. I have two questions for you. And I'm going to be referring to the draft report background that you
Okay.
ago. Beginning in the area that is 1.3 that refers to the schedule. We talk about obtaining town council approval by July 2021. And then also in 1.3 after that is this phrase, apply for state funding. If you have the answer to my question, or perhaps Nancy does. Who has has this already been decided formally to apply for state funding? And who is the entity who is overseeing that decision? I think it's State Library.
Are you referring to the Connecticut State Library grant? I I believe that's what.
It just says state funding, so I'm asking you what it is.
Well, for the State Library grant, that's something that needs to be applied for by August of the year, which is, I think, on our actually, it's September here, but generally, we target August to be in advance. That requires basically the schematic design, basic information and cost estimate for the project. And the State Library application goes into them. They review it during the course of the fall, and they generally provide notification by late November or December. Here, it's shown as the final line in November.
Okay, my question is, who applies for it?
The the library or the town applies for it. We assist, we provide all the, you know, assistance in terms of materials to support that application.
Okay, is it for a set amount or a percentage of the whole?
I wish it was a percentage of the whole. It's a, it's a up to a maximum of $1 million. So obviously, for a project like this, I think one would apply towards that $1 million. And I think it's likely, depending on funding, you'd be able to get that.
So in fact, it has not been applied for as yet.
No, has not.
Okay. My second question is, in 1.4, we refer to the phrase, a building site that meets square footage requirements.
Yes.
And whose requirements are we referring to there, Whit?
The square footage requirements would be based on the program that is decided by the committee and agreed to. And then, you know, to that program, obviously, we add whatever has to be built in terms of grossing factor to get a building size that fits, but that's part of that process.
In the second part of your statement, are you, do I understand you to me mean that there are certain requirements that are grant qualifiers in that square footage?
Grant qualifiers? No, I don't believe so. No, I think it's it's, I mean, that one of the things that the State Library looks for is information to support the program that you're applying for. Generally, their worksheets that develop a certain size have a kind of a suggested range of size. But I don't think it's a requirement. I don't know that that may perhaps Leslie and Alan can speak to that as well.
But they are not breaking it down any further than that. So I can I can ask for the document to see what they are requiring informationally. So those two things are the things I was interested in. And why I'm particularly interested in it is you refer to, and I'm sure it's correct, the charge to the library and the charge to the library building committee is silent on the item of cost. So I think these two questions are very important because they are milestones that we are looking at that will end up being reflective of meeting needs with costs and where they intersect. And Nancy, as Secretary of the Committee, I would very much appreciate if you would include those two questions and the answers that Whit was kind enough to give in our minutes. So that's the only two questions that I have, and I thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other questions for Whit?
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah, thank you. Couple of things with number one. I don't see in here the cost for emphasis for making processor the branch as an example. Because if we were put the main library with where the face McMahon Wintonbury is, then processor would become a branch. And in order to compare what the costs are for each of the options, I think that needs to be included as well.
Yeah. I I think that's a valid point. Yeah, I I think you're still talking, but are you still saying something, Bob? Oh, I thought you were still talking. I didn't want to cut you off. Okay. Yeah, I think that's a valid point, and we can look at that and get back to you some information on that. It would basically, if one were, let's say, for argument's sake, looking at the the larger library on the McMahon Wintonbury site, is that what you're, something like that? And then processor becoming a a second library, then it might be just renovating the processor library or a portion of it to serve as a branch.
Correct. And I think it was important to have that number because that can, that that can skew things. If that's a high enough number, then that can make it rethink some of the thinking we already have.
Yeah.
Now, we want to try and make this decision next Wednesday.
Right. I mean, I think just in terms of order of magnitude, if you look at processor library, which is 22,000 square feet total. Let's say you were going to renovate just the upper floors and leave the lower floor. You know, since it's potentially flood prone. So I don't have that exact number, but I think you you might remove 10,000 square feet from theirs. You might be looking at, say, a 12,000 square foot renovated portion of processor. That would be similar in cost to the 12,000 square feet of space at McMahon in this option, although it would all be renovated space. So then that processor project, I suspect, would be somewhere in a similar order of magnitude to what we had originally shown here for McMahon, just comparing rough, roughly speaking. And we can look at this and we can report back.
Thank you. My other question has more to do with the space items in there. Number one, I see the kitchen is still in there, and I thought that had been taken out. Number two.
You're talking about in the program?
Yes.
Okay, that program, yeah, as soon as the program, if the program is updated, we'll we'll work with that one.
Number two, I see space identified as let me see how it's called in here. Bathroom, family restroom. I don't see anything identifying other restrooms.
Are you talking about these, the conceptual floor plans?
I'm not talking about the the space.
In the space program?
The space has been right. Spaces for.
I can hear you, Bob.
How much space each of these different, I'm not muted.
No. Yeah, we can hear you. Need you to project a little louder, please.
A family restroom listed with no space, but I don't see anything listing the space needed for for other restrooms.
Well, that's generally folds into the grossing factor for the building, unless it's identified in particular. So in addition to circulation, some of the building functions, mechanical rooms and whatnot.
Right. My other thing, which is my other comment, which I think is more for the subcommittee than it is for you, is I noticed that a lot of the, a lot of the these items are portable. And portable things don't need a specific amount of space dedicated to them, so that they kind of can be, in that sense, the space needed for them can be combined with other spaces. And I think that would help reduce the size of the building because I suspect that the cost factors are going to be about the same for space. So one of the things I think we need to be thinking about is what size space are we really going to be using, rather than letting programs derive, drive the whole space question? I think it needs to be a combination of what space can we afford to have? And then do we need to expand that, or can we make that work? Because I we're going to go out and get cost estimates, which is going to give us a better handle on the actual cost. But looking at it, your layout of costs, I'm not so sure that your all the numbers you plugged in there are relatively accurate. I suspect that some of them are on the low side. And that's going to get causes a greater amount of difficulty trying to get this project through a referendum through.
Right. And that's what the the final cost estimator is, his task will be to to update those with the current numbers and
Right.
One other thing, just just to in response to the question about the program for portable things, I'm not quite sure exactly which ones, but I would. The only caveat I might have is that some of the portable elements might have a space requirement just for storage of a portable element. So it's it it could come out and share a space with something else, but then whatever that thing is, needs to be put somewhere when it's not in use.
Would it be okay if I responded to that real quick? Is that all right?
Yeah.
Sure.
Um, so I I think that in, first off, the the kitchen you're talking about is the it's not the the teaching kitchen, it's a kitchenette that would be attached to the community room. And as far as the the portable items having space allocated to them, obviously, like Whit said, that is because Leslie determined that they they take up a certain amount of space, and that's all calculated. And I will say, a lot of this stuff, we are planning to pare down or trim or possibly cut. Again, what they're working with here right now is the space plan that was built so that they could determine site feasibility.
Right.
So so please keep that in mind, and we are very excited about the possibility of trimming this and making this as efficient as possible, so that we definitely have that in mind. If if cost, if the push comes to shove when it comes to cost. So I just wanted to make those points. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I know that Lois had her hand up.
Yes.
Just real quick, on page 22, page 27, you still have a teaching kitchen in there.
On page 27?
That's what the program committee committee is going to be reviewing and.
I thought that would have been taken out.
There was.
It had. It must just be a mistake.
I think this is from whichever original program that we have received. So if there's a newer one, it will be updated with the newest one.
Okay.
Can I actually throw something in quickly also?
Okay, before you do it, I'm sorry, I want to get to Lois because she's.
I have a question about LEED. It's very, very important to me that this building be as green as it possibly can. And I see a reference, sort of an incidental reference on page 24 to other considerations, and LEED is put there as an other consideration.
to other considerations and lead is put there as an other consideration. I would like it to have more prominence in the report. And I would like to have some understanding from you about whether we need to build a different budget for the lead issues. For example, if we were going to have solar, if we were going to have a, this is something that drives everybody crazy, but if you're going to have, get credits for lead for providing ability for people to ride to work, then there has to be a shower for them. But more, more important, I think, are the HVAC issues. What are we comfortable with the numbers that you presented? That we could do a very, very green, at least lead silver building for the numbers that are included here?
Well,
It's going to be for 20 to 30 years and to build something that isn't really environmentally up to speed. It, it just, it isn't worth our time.
Yep. No, I totally agree. One of the things that actually drives that is the requirements of the Connecticut State Library for the projects that they fund greater than $10 million, they require lead silver. I think it may be that you can use Connecticut High Performance Building Standards. In lieu of that, we would have to confirm that again with them, but it's equivalent to the lead silver. So that, that would have to be a part of the larger project at least.
Does it have that money in it?
It included in the estimates, the only thing that isn't in the soft cost line items, which Richard noted today when we were speaking was we didn't identify a line item for a commissioning agent, which is when you were doing a lead project, there was a requirement for a commissioning agent that is engaged by the owner. So that would have to be added to the, the project cost, the soft cost. But in terms of the design of the building, you know, we typically design around that equivalent lead silver range typically these days. That's, that's almost the baseline. Beyond that, there's certain costs that could be additional. And, you know, certainly beyond lead silver, there's other levels of, of sustainability. You know, now we're looking at net zero buildings and which basically end up producing as much energy as they consume over a single year, which is a great target. However, doing that requires energy generation onsite such as a great deal of PV panels, solar panels on the roof. And that's, that's a significant investment for a project upfront. There's different ways to fund that, but that's a big premium cost that would have to be considered if one were going that route. But in answer to your question, yes, we can certainly meet the, the, the lead silver standards generally for the, for a project.
But if, excuse me, if we wanted to do the net zero, which is now being required of buildings that are being, public buildings that are being built in Boston, I think. I think we need to know what that would cost and not just dismiss it out of hand now because it would cost more.
No, I, I agree. And I think that might be something to also address with the, when we do the final cost estimating, to have that looked at, perhaps as an alternate price that you have a cost of what that additional premium might be to have onsite energy generation capabilities.
I'm, I'm thinking of the, of the parking lot, which could generate a lot of, of solar power. And I had hoped that it could also generate some that could be sold to the next door shopping center. We, we, these are opportunities to think big. And I think we should be doing that before we reject them because of, of budget.
I, I agree. I mean, I think from the long term, that's the right way to go. It's, it's, it's just, it's a challenge in the short term to make that commitment, but I, I totally support that.
Ava?
Yeah, I wanted to mention, because Bob had asked about the space allotments for some of these items. When we were working on this, we have to use the state worksheets and they have those built in. Some of these things will probably actually take less space than they look like right now. The state has a formula for, you know, every service desk, all of these things. If, if we do the grant application, then we would have to contact them and be absolutely certain if we can change that in the grant application. But this is probably, as Leah was saying, this is probably more space than we were actually talking about.
What, can we take the, the screen down so we, I can't see who? Okay, great.
Mark has his hand up.
Yeah. With, we had talked earlier about the, the Tuttle and Wells solution on Town Hall where we actually demolished that one story piece of Town Hall and recreated a new council chamber in this project with a building attached. Is, is there a reason why you haven't looked at that? Did you, did you get into that at all enough to dismiss it or is it just something you haven't looked at yet? You know, because if we, you know, in the, in this process here of where we really do select Town Hall as, as the site, then I think that, that should be something that, that's looked at unless you know something about that we don't know.
No, I will review with Richard with that. I, I don't think we've taken that as a considered option at this point. I know in some of the previous meetings, there was some questions about the whole idea of connecting to Town Hall relative to the Town Hall's need to eventually expand in the future. I think that was a constriction. But it, we can certainly take a look at that and see if that.
Yeah, I mean, I realize we're already suffering sticker shock. What I'm, you know, that solution means we're building, we're demolishing more, we're building more.
I, I guess the one factor with that might be relative to library, State Library grants to if we're incorporating a, you're saying a new council chamber within our project, then that gets a little bit messy for the State Library to accept that as a piece of a project unless it's very clearly isolated out from a cost standpoint.
Right. But, but to Michelle's point, what's best for us may not be necessarily have to be, you know, driven by that $1 million carrot. Depending on what it's costing us to get there.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ava?
Yeah, there's another point that we'd probably have to consider when you're looking at costs. If we have a three-story building, then you are talking about an increase in the town's facility staff. And you're also talking about a significant increase in library staff. The minute you add a floor, you are adding staff and that becomes a permanent budgetary consideration. I know the town manager has already expressed some concern about the, the impact that this project would have on the facility staff. And their supplies and all of that, which definitely would be an increase if you put on another floor. And library staff considerations would be a very large increase.
Yeah, I, I think that's definitely a disadvantage of that three-story option, which I think was cited previously.
Thank you. That's a, Bob?
And just very quickly, I just ran some numbers on what the contingencies on each of these are. New building of Prosser is 6.2 million contingency. Prosser two is 5.6 million. McMahon, new building is 5.6. The addition is 1.9 is the currently stands. And Town Hall, new building is 5.9 and attached to Town Hall is 6 million. Just so you have an idea of what they put in there for contingencies.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there aren't any further questions for Whit, I want to welcome Todd Cooper. Todd joined us late, but Todd is a member of the Library Board. Todd, thank you so much for joining us. You missed your wonderful introduction earlier, Ava. Did a great job of talking up your board, so welcome. I think this is a, a great segue and we're going to go into our future meetings. We all know that we have a special meeting next Wednesday, the third. And then we meet again on the 10th. But before moving on to the next agenda item, I just wanted to throw out a feeler without having folks commit to anything, but I'm curious to hear what are people thinking as far as a site? I mean, where are you leaning? What are you thinking? And again, we're not holding anyone to anything, but I just, as we move into the process of next week and beginning these discussions, it, I think it would be helpful just to hear from a few people as to, you know, what your thoughts are. And again, you're not committed, you know, this won't be your vote, but it would help us as we could, excuse me, hear from the group. Anyone interested in sharing?
I guess, Bob, like, I'm a favor of this existing Prosser site tearing it down and building a new library. That's just my, that's what I, that's what I would support. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Hi, Todd Cooper, and thank you so much, Mr. Chairman Gregg. I appreciate it and sorry for, for the, being late. It's just that time of the year for me. You know, I, I certainly agree. I think that I'm, I'm sort of torn, but I think the, the existing site holds a lot of promise to it. And, you know, there was some talk about the building that's behind it that, you know, could possibly be torn down and used in some sense. Rather than Town Hall, I think that side is probably putting a lot, a lot in that one space. But the, where we are, where the Prosser is, there seems to be a, a lot that can be done there with the adjacent properties. And I think that gives the, the town and certainly the group the most options with, with where it is. And so that's it for me. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'll go, Greg.
Bob, Mark, go.
Prosser site with a new building is where I'm leaning at the moment.
Mr. Berman?
I'm leaning toward Bloomfield Avenue Town Hall site is my first choice. Prosser new building is a second choice. And Wittenberry new building is a third choice.
Okay. Lois?
We don't get to vote.
Well, it's not about, everyone's, we want to hear from everyone.
I, I, I think that we would have an elegant, outstanding, amazing new building on the Prosser site. Gorgeous. But we have to commit that it will be that. And, and that means it will take money and time. If we just want a library, we can put it anywhere.
Okay. Shelly, you're interested in opining or sharing?
Well, considering we just got that rather complete report only yesterday, and I'm still reviewing it. I guess I would say what I would eliminate, not what I would propose to approve. I would eliminate Bloomfield Avenue and I would eliminate Winton Berry McMahon. So there are other options for the Prosser site. I don't know which one.
Okay. Ava?
Yeah, well, I don't get to vote, so.
We still want to hear from you.
My heart would be with McMahon. But I understand the economic and political realities here, so I would assume that Prosser would be a preferred site. However, having said that, under no circumstances would I be willing to support a project that does not include improvement to McMahon. The majority of the population is there, the population density is there. There are serious social justice issues here. There are equity issues. And there are just plain moral human reasons that every single person in this town deserves an excellent facility that is accessible to them. And accessible can mean a lot of things, but for people who take the bus, who walk, to expect them to cross town says something about what we were thinking, if, if we would accept that, and I would not. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. And we have committed to, it's a, a package deal where whatever we're doing, we're going to improve the entire system. So I don't think it's one or the other. But Maxine, you're interested in sharing?
I think that I am torn between McMahon and Prosser. I think that we have their benefits for both, but as Ava was saying, I think we have to be very mindful of being inclusive as we build something that's going to last for a long time in our, in our town. So I'm, I'm sort of torn. I say all of that to say I'm sort of torn, but I want to proceed with inclusivity in mind.
Okay. Elizabeth, we're not going to ask you. Unless you want to go on a record, but I assume that you might want to abstain, but it's your call.
I just wanted to say that one of our, as a staff, we are committed to, you know, tackling social justice issues. And so many people live on the other side of town, McMahon Wittenberry neighborhoods. A lot of our youth live over there, so I also lean heavily towards that side.
Okay. Vangela?
Sorry about that. I do love the central location. I, in, in that part of town, I would love to see Prosser developed more. I, I am not really familiar with McMahon. I have been there, but I'm not really very familiar. But I love, I, I would love to see Prosser.
Okay, great. Anne, you're on the call. Would you like to share? If not, what about you, Dave? You have an opinion?
I'm going to echo what Elizabeth had to say. I do, I, I'd like to abstain for the most part, but I do think that looking at the Blue Hills Avenue area is definitely is worthwhile.
I think, have I, Bev, would you like, I'm sorry, Bev, I missed.
That's okay. Yes, I would like to say something. I prefer the Prosser location. I think it's a very important piece of our, center of our town. I use both libraries equally. I, I go to both of them. I grew up on the wrong side of town. And I really would like to see that library expanded a bit. But my primary location is Prosser, even though I don't have a vote. Thanks for asking.
Okay, thank you. All right, did I get to everyone who wants to?
Yeah.
No. You're just tired of hearing me talk. I, what Ava said, but I'm not eloquent, so yeah, that. If, if it was a perfect world, it would, I would say McMahon all the way. But I get that, that's not the reality. I'm, I'm just happy as long as it happens. That's it.
All right.
Greg?
Yes.
I, I understand the issues about equity and I think they're terribly important. And, and that's why I would support renovating the building on Blue Hills Avenue also, but if we look at the geography and then we actually look at the demographics, I wonder if we're, because of the housing density on the side, which is right close to the Windsor border, we are losing track of some of the density that's closer to the center of town. So I, I don't think, I mean, if we actually looked and saw how many people lived in every area, it's, we might see this less skewed than we believe. And I think the real issue is transportation for people and comfort for people to come to the center of town. And, and my hope for Bloomfield is that that will be more and more and more comfortable. And that this library will be a beacon for everybody.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I am not going to press an opinion on it tonight, but hopefully, as I mentioned in our last meeting, for our conversation next Wednesday, our special meeting, if there are any materials, information that you think are germane to that conversation, please let us know. We're trying to make sure that you have everything that you need to begin that conversation. And the agenda for March 3rd would be strictly talking about site selection and criteria. Okay. Want to open it up to comments from the committee? We'll get into the public comments. Any committee comments? Nancy, you have anything from the public?
Let me check. Yes, we have Stan Casperson. And.
And right, oops, Stan, sorry about that. Okay, Stan, unmute yourself in, go ahead.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most interesting meeting. I do have a number of comments on, uh, TSKP's detailed cost, uh, matrix. But before that, I wanted to follow up on what Lois Hager was saying regarding, uh, greenhouse, et cetera. Uh, this is a subject that I haven't heard explicitly mentioned on any of these meetings until tonight. Um, it's one that I've been holding back on, waiting for the subject to come up. Lois stated it very eloquently. I want to follow up on the RFPs that are to be issued to cost estimators and the construction manager with the charge, if not there, that the cost estimating include uh, energy efficiency, greenhouse gas emissions, carbon-free materials, environmental impact consideration. Put that into the, the cost estimating and construction manager, uh, returns now. I've, uh, frankly been boning up on this, so I support what, uh, Whit was saying, that the standards from Connecticut are inclusive of many of these considerations. But I think it's very important for the committee and the taxpayers down the road to know what they're getting for their money as opposed to what maybe they might not be getting for their money. Um, in terms of lead, I know that that's a scary term. It's a scary term. Aiming for silver, I'm not an expert, but it's an aim. Obtaining lead certified status with inclusion of, uh, the standards that are available is something that the town of Bloomfield can be very proud of. Let me move on from that. So, including the RFPs includes inclusion of those considerations. On, uh, Whit's table, I just take note of the thirty-five to forty yard long footbridge. Four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, including footings. My only comment is, uh, those footings will go in a floodplain. I don't know if that requires special, um, uh, blessing from somebody. Secondly, the site work with is based on per acre. That's how you did the costing. But for the existing Prosser library site, there is site work not done on any of the others with respect to flood control, flood avoidance, uh, waterproofing, et cetera. So it seems that that cost ought to be more than just on a per acre basis. Um, thirdly, I'm familiar with the cost of computer equipment, IT. For the human services facility, it started out with one budget and gradually crept up to some number. I heard it stated that the two fifty or so, uh, thousand dollars has come from the town, but I would just caution with all the computers uh, and the stations and the work tables in your plans not to be surprised if that cost comes up somewhat. And, um, lastly, if I were to say what a preference from an outsider would be, if I looked at what might be done with McMahon and I looked at what might be done with the existing Prosser site as one project or at least, uh, two items that we'd be, would be done in close proximity or time wise to each other, I would ask whether there are any potential shared costs between those two projects. I would just leave that to Whit as something that, uh, he could think about when you get your feedback from your special meeting, uh, March third, depending on how it goes. That's another input to fine tuning the cost estimates. Thank you very much. It's been very interesting, very informative.
Thank you.
Next we have Councilor Wong. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to reiterate, uh, the social justice and racial equity implications of leaning towards a McMahon location. I, that, to Ava's point, uh, that sits heavy on my heart. We have a real, we have a really good chance right now to demonstrate what kind of town we are. We've been, this twenty twenty and twenty nineteen and, and this top of the year have been very telling for us as far as what we want to represent and what we say. We have a chance to execute on that, uh, with this project. And I do just want to reiterate, I thank you, Ava, for speaking up on those social justice issues, Maxine and Leah and our staff. I'm encouraged that we're thinking through and planning through a lens of equity, whatever the result may be. I'm just really glad that that has been incorporated in tonight's, uh, discussion. So I just wanted to, um, put that out there. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
And now I'm gonna let Mr. Dickinson back in and unmute him. So, Mr. Dickinson, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and speak.
Uh, yes, I think, uh, what I was intending to comment on has, uh, already been covered and that is, uh, to, uh, consider what, uh, future heating and cooling costs are, are and, uh, you know, and, and consideration of, of geothermal heating and cooling, which requires a big upfront investment, but, uh, uh, further on, it saves money. I think here at Seaberry, uh, the, the investment is, has, has paid off. That's, that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it. Okay, great. Uh, I just wanted to take a moment before we adjourn to again, uh, thank our members from the library, um, Board of Trustees for joining us tonight. Um, we look forward to inviting you all back for another meeting. Uh, but hopefully you found this meeting and the process informative and helpful. And again, thank you for the great work that you do. And, um, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Lois? Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. See you soon and, uh, be on the lookout for the messenger on Friday with, uh, an article from the building committee.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you. Good night.
Night all.